Is the sound usually come from there? I thought it came from the TV.
No, I don't think so.
No idea. Long as we can hear it.
Select the speaker. Okay, microphone's right, let's go. We just got the same phone, is that what the TV is?
Hmm.
Say something Bob.
Oh, he's muted.
I was muted, there we go.
That's how we normally have it set up.
There we go.
Alright, we're all good now, everybody's in the room.
And you can hear us okay Bob?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
You gonna run it, or do you?
I was, I was hoping that Sandra would run it, since I may, you know, the tone goes off, then there's an expectation.
Alright, I will. I will call this regular meeting of the town of Buckfield Select Board to order April eighth, twenty twenty five at six thirty-five PM. And we do have a quorum. Old business. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Town Meeting Warrants. First, we will review the draft Town Meeting Warrant. Believe there are a few changes in wording, am I correct Cameron? There's no new content?
So the majority of the warrant articles are still what you went over at the public hearing?
Correct.
Um, there's now currently thirty-five warrant articles, um, so the bulk of the the difference, I think if you recall at the public hearing, there was one warrant article to accept the the gifts from the estate, um, there's now six or seven because of each individual gift. So there was some back and forth with the attorneys from the estate and our attorney just trying to figure out the proper wording, as well as context for voters, so that they understand that if they vote no what's gonna happen.
Yep.
Um, so when I last talked to you Sandra, I was still waiting to hear back, I did hear back after this was printed, so what I've got up on my screen on Article twenty-nine is, the one in your packet says about halfway through the warrant articles, which includes but is not limited to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used to create a fund, it now says um, is not limited to approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand, so he gave us the total of what was in the residuary, and then you back up the scholarship funds, um, because there's still some it's unsure if those have failed, and so if they don't fail, we've added warrant articles to accept or reject those separately, so there's three separate warrant articles for the scholarships. Um, should those fail in court or in agreeance with everything, that would lapse to the residuary and increase that amount. So, that was the only change there, they're wordy, but there's a lot of information in there to basically say, you know, this is what it is. And if you don't, this is what's gonna happen.
So, am I correct? The law, when we had the public hearing, Article twenty-nine was all-inclusive of the gifts from Mr. Jordan, now due to legal necessity.
Yep.
It's been broken into Article twenty-nine, Article thirty, Article thirty-one, Article thirty-two, Article thirty-three, and Article thirty-four.
Correct. Article twenty-nine addresses the house and two acres which is to be used for providing a vocation for, um, training and support of rescue. Article thirty is the roughly thirteen point nine additional acres that is to be used for recreational purposes for the public. Um, and then you move on to Article thirty-one, that is now one of the scholarships that he had hoped to create in his will, but left it to the trustees of the library, so that whole question of where it's been disbanded, does this fail? It's still up in the air, but you know, with the timeframes we need for the meeting, I said, well, it's better to vote on something and get approval, and if it denies, then no harm, no foul, so that's why we added each of these individually in here, it goes over the purpose of what they're for. Article thirty-two is another fifty thousand dollar scholarship. Trust fund, um, Article thirty-three is another one. And then Article thirty-four is specific to that, uh, Portland Headlight trip that he had in his will, so that, that's specific to that. Um, and if I understand this if I'm, if I'm understanding the process correctly, as it's been explained to me, should any of these articles fail, like the town doesn't accept the scholarship, that money will fall to the residuary, was did I say that right? Residuary estate, which will then go towards the funding of the maintenance on the the two properties, which alternates years. Um, if they pass, it's just like any of the other scholarships we have, he's just, he's got terms that they need to be followed.
Hmm.
But if the, uh, property is rejected.
Article twenty-nine and Article thirty.
Even, I, I believe if, even if one of them fails, the entire residuary goes to the Hells Angels with that particular property, so if we were to decline the house but accept the property, we'd be accepting the property with no money to maintain it, because the residuary went with that, that's the way I understand it, don't quote me on that, but it's, it's kind of a complex.
Well, we have clarification on that within the next week.
Possibly, I mean, it won't change the warrant articles as it.
No, but.
As I get more information.
Share with um, folks who are going to vote specifically that information.
I do have a few emails from the town's attorney, and they're pretty lengthy, so if I go back and reread them, and maybe I missed something.
Okay.
Um, I'll share it with you, I'll share the emails with all of you, so you can interpret them maybe better than me, or, or, so we're all on the same page.
Sounds great.
But there's just a lot of information going back and forth between it, and inevitably, it looks like, from, you know, every, looking over the entire will, it would be in the town's best interest to accept all of this one way or another, um. You know, yes, we'd be losing the tax value of the property, but what we'd be gaining in the interest income from the residuary to maintain the properties is far more than what we would have had we let it go somewhere else, and then we get our, you know, limited amount of tax revenue from it, so. We'll see what the voters think, but that's where we're at with those, so that was the big, the big changes that have been happening over the last forty-eight hours, and then um, obviously in the gist of all this, you know, the, the old church thing, I've adjusted the wording of the article. You can review it and discuss it, if you want to change it, I have the copy and I can go and change it. Uh, I think.
Oh, okay.
No, I think, I think your concern was the unaltered aspect of it.
Correct.
Um, so this gives it a little bit more leeway as far as will remain similar to its original design, obviously building codes have changed, and like you said, um, having a fire exit, if it's a resident, show the property is pretty important, so. And all that would be hashed out in a, you know, what you call it? Lease agreement or purchase and sale agreement prior to your property transferring.
And to reiterate again to the community, the goal isn't to dispose of this property as quickly as possible. The goal is to look to see what the opportunities are for the old church on the hill, and the intent is to involve the community to whatever degree. They will be, they want to be involved, um, to have those discussions, and because we'd like to see the old church on the hill remain standing for a long time to come.
I am wondering, um, under Article twenty-nine, because you said that your understanding is that the acceptance of the cash gifts is largely reliant on the acceptance of the property as well. I'm wondering if we should tweak the language where in the middle where it says, whereas non-acceptance of this gift would result in the property being devised to the nearest chapter, should we, after property, say, property and cash gifts? You know, this is.
The attorneys drafted this, so I wouldn't even recommend just because we've gone back, I think this is probably the fourth draft of this.
Yeah.
From the attorneys, um, trying to remember what it says in here. Whereas if the town rejects the cash gift in this article, the cash gift will be added to the residuary estate, and if the town has rejected either of the gifts of real estate in Articles twenty-nine and thirty, the rejected real estate and the residuary of the state will be devised to the nearest chapter, so that answers the question we were just talking about.
Gotcha.
So that's addressed in Article thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, it's a, it's the same language over and over again.
Okay.
Um, so I think that makes it clear that if they reject the property, the residuary follows.
Yep, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Thank you, touch on an important part, point Azalea, that it behooves us to educate the community. Amount that this is a lot of.
Right, obviously, it's important that we involve this all on the attorney's recommendation, but it has become quite the wall of text, and I'm worried that it will be a little overwhelming and booth for people. Um, but yeah.
That's another, the reason why I think having another public hearing, once this is closer to the meeting, and really hitting on this stuff. Even if people can't attend in person or on that time, they can at least go back and watch it and see
Yeah.
what's at stake if they don't.
And perhaps we can, you know, develop some, a brief little blurb to clarify and send out to the email list, letting them know that there is an upcoming election, and this is what's on the ballot, and this is how it will work. Um, and also maybe publish that on the website and the Facebook as well.
I agree.
Alright, does anybody else have any questions or comments about the draft Town Meeting Warrant? Think Bob's shaking and is having that bitty, bitty little screen I see. Okay. Okay, so we will move on, um, to the topic of approving the Town Meeting Warrant, do I hear a motion?
Um, I will make the motion to approve the annual Town Meeting Warrant for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion, any discussion?
I feel as though we should have a discussion, um. Economic policy certainly obeys me for the most part, I try to understand what I can. I am just wondering obviously, if anyone turns on the news, it's all anyone's talking about. Are we worried about the prospect of tariffs affecting our municipal budget? Um, and if that means that we anticipate exceeding our municipal budget, if we should have a conversation about raising certain line items, a certain percentage. Um, you have the best understanding of our municipal government, so I guess I would default to your advice on that, I know that things seemingly change by the day, and, you know, maybe a couple months from now, this will all be a distant memory, but I am concerned about the prospect of, uh, yeah, financial strain that that could put on the town and our budget.
When we composed this budget, we took that, we took those factors into account, uh, as you recall, especially because the areas that is gonna hit us the most, um, would be rescue, because of medical supplies.
Of course.
Um, we factored in, I think this rough, I think we increased that line by a, a certain amount, anticipating that that could have an impact on us. Um, and then the majority of other things, you know, parts, yeah, we've already increased the budget, um, for public works on maintenance specifically to address other things, so I think we'll be good there. Um, materials like gravel, obviously, we're not getting those from other countries, so that's good. Um, but I feel, I feel like we're I think we built a budget to anticipate it. Um, and that we're not gonna run into any of those situations, if we do, or we start to hint that we're gonna get in that direction, we could always hold a special town meeting to address any shortfall, but I don't anticipate it'll be significant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Let's hope it'll be a distant memory.
Memory, yes.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and, uh, you know, express larger concern over what's gonna happen with the schools, but as Cam said, uh, you know, we can always go to special town meeting if we get stuck.
Hmm. Yeah, I certainly understand the emphasis on the schools, but at the end of the day, there's nothing that this board can do about what the school budget is doing, that's up to the people in our community and on the school board, so I just wanted to address what covers our territory, but thank you.
I don't know, did I forward you an email from MMA that I received last week? I thought, I may have thought about it, and I may. Uh, so, the legislative side of MMA, you know, they track bills, they track everything, but uh, Kate De Four also sent out a email regarding, if you recall, the state's budget that passed along lines, and it's only gonna, it's supposed to take effect in July.
Hmm.
Um, there were some lawmakers and some former lawmakers that were initiating a petition to veto it, through a people's veto.
Right.
Should that group succeed, and turns in the right, the correct number of signatures are required by June eighteenth, I believe. That will freeze that budget, so basically, it won't go into effect until an election happens in November, so what does that mean for the town and the school? Because it hits both of us.
Yeah.
Is all the school funding that they get from the state, and all of our municipal revenue sharing will be essentially frozen until a decision has been made by the voters, so just something to anticipate, for us as a town, the municipal revenue sharing is a significant portion of our revenue, but not as much as it is for the, the school.
Hmm.
Um, so that may be something that affects everybody here shortly, so just keep an eye on that, and it'll kind of give you a heads-up gauge of what we're looking at for the first six months.
Right.
Because I anticipate, and, and I don't know for a fact, I mean, if it, if it fails in November, I assume the budget would kick in immediately, but I'm not positive. If it doesn't, then the legislators will have to go back, the legislature will have to go back and pass a budget that everybody can agree on, so who knows how long that can take, so that can delay it six months to so, just something to make you aware of, I thought I forwarded you the email so that you'd be up to speed, but.
I don't see it, I might just be messing it, but if you could just refer it to me again when you get the chance, I would be interested in checking that out.
Sorry, kind of went off topic, but I felt it was important to share.
No, that's all things we should certainly be taking into consideration here.
Do it on the spot, I won't forget, right?
Do we have any other further discussion?
Sorry, you can see Bob now.
That's okay. Bob, anything further?
No, I'm good.
Okay, um, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Bye-bye.
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye? For the board unanimously approves the Town Meeting Warrant for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll pass it around, just so it's on a video that you guys signed it.
Okay.
Bob, you can sign it when, next time you're in town.
Are you all caught up? I didn't want to be showing it.
Well, I was just trying to find. Hmm. Hmm, yes.
And Cameron, for those people listening, if there's anybody that would want to see this email with this information, this is information
Yeah.
that we can send to anybody, because this is not just a local issue, this would be a state issue that perhaps we should all be aware of.
I did receive an email, um, from Kate De Four, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Um, a federal action alert on tax-exempt bonds, does this affect the town of Buckfield?
Not currently.
Okay.
Um, but a lot of towns have tax-exempt bonds that would increase the cost of construction when they take up I don't understand them fully, because we haven't utilized them, you know, in the time that I've been here, but, I mean, it's, it's definitely something that could impact all localities, if they ever needed to get bonds for big projects, infrastructure project. Um, but I did just forward that email to all of you, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So on to new business. The consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda, which includes payroll and accounts payable warrants, rescue report, and library report?
Thank you. Cool.
Oh. Payroll warrant coming in at twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents, and accounts payable warrant coming in at thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents for a total of fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. The Buckfield Rescue Department gave us their March twenty twenty-five monthly report. They've had a total of thirty-eight calls for service during the month of March, twenty-four of which were our, uh, answered between the hours of six AM and six PM, and fourteen of them were between the hours of six PM and AM. Um, you can see the full report, uh, as part of our packet, I believe.
Yep.
Yeah, on the town website. Um, as well as the library reporter. Tech Help Mondays have become a weekly feature, um, Jim comes in and provides people with assistance, uh, and giving people the time to practice new skills. Um, Heather Lavery caught, taught a group of ten artists ages five to twelve at their paint party. Um, Kathy also attended the Maine State Annual Report. Some of the highlights that she found were, uh, in the past fiscal year, are the increases in library attendance as well as the number of programs, patron computer use, and more interlibrary loans, as well as the increased use of their meeting room. Um, largest decrease in the report is their number of active patrons. We have one thousand seventy-one listed, but this year we updated the records, and the actual number of registered patrons is six hundred and thirty-four. Um, many families share one library card, but if you don't have one already, I bet Kathy would encourage you to go down there and get one.
This number here, that in two thousand twenty-four, there were three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five visits to the library.
That is awesome.
That is wonderful. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? I'll call for a vote.
Bob, aye?
Delia, aye?
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye? The consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, the approval of the minutes of the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Select Board Meeting.
Make motion to approve the minutes in March eighteen, twenty twenty-five Select Board Meeting?
I will second.
Meeting through the minutes, I didn't see anything that was inaccurate.
I didn't notice anything either.
No, three, three to zeros? It was a little wonky towards fifteen, because that was the recess and bringing it back, so that's why it looks the way that it does.
Oh. Given the discussion necessary, I'll call for a vote.
Delia, aye?
Bob, aye?
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye? And the minutes are approved. Next, under new business, we have committee reappointments. Um, we have three folks here who are looking for reappointments to the Community Events Committee. We need to do each person separately, is that correct Cameron?
Um, they're mult, they're different terms.
Okay.
And also, Colleen Holley, Halsey is a, not necessarily a reappointment, she used to be on this committee, so she's applying to go back on, so the other two are reappointments, so they'll kick in when their term expires at the end of June. Hers will begin immediately and would expire June of twenty twenty-six, does that make sense? Because everything runs per calendar, yeah.
Yes.
So, I'd do it separately, just to.
I will make a motion, we, um, accept David Song Grant's, uh, application for a two-year term on the Community Events Committee.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Delia, aye?
Bob, aye?
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye? Thank you very much, David.
I will make a motion that we appoint Jennifer Lowell to a one-year term on the Community Events Committee.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Delia, aye?
Bob, aye?
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye? Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Hmm.
Azalea, you're on a roll.
I'll keep going, I'll keep going, I will. I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, appoint Colleen Halsey to a one-year term on the Community Events Committee.
Um, second.
Yep, she asked me to change.
Two-year, two-year term.
Okay, for anybody that's following along online, we are.
I will amend my motion.
Thank you.
I'll do it officially, uh, to appoint Colleen Halsey to a two-year term on the Community Events Committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Can we just up that number to four or five?
She might disagree.
Alright, I'll call for a vote.
Azalea, aye?
Bob, aye?
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye? Thank you very much, Colleen. Alright, um, next item of new business, AVCOG General Assembly Representatives.
Can include it.
So, I will make a motion that we reappoint Azalea Cormier and Cameron Hinckley as AVCOG General Assembly Members.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Other than to thank you both very, very much.
I didn't check in with you on that, I just assumed you were fine with it.
I don't mind one bit, I've got it in the calendar, I'm already for the thirtieth.
Fantastic. Alright, I'll call for a vote. You can vote.
Okay. We're all good.
Bob, aye?
Delia, aye?
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
There's your ballot, once you fill it out, I have the envelope, send it back.
Wow.
Yes, my name's on it.
One more thing to do, huh? Just too bored.
Lowkey.
Okay.
Okay.
Other business, we set aside fifteen minutes at the end of every meeting for public comment, do we have anyone joining us? Through any electronic means?
There's nobody else here other than us at the moment.
Okay. Do we have any other, other business? Okay. So pursuant to one MRSA subsection four oh five six A, um, calling an executive session to discuss the town manager's evaluation. Do I have to say anything else?
Nope, you covered everything.
Okay. For people to know that as you're watching this, we will come back from this executive session, and then I'm going to ask for another executive session to discuss the town manager's contract, and we will come back from that. No decisions will be made during an executive session. Thank you.
You made the motion. Who seconded? I'll second. So Sandra, you go.
All right. Call for a vote.
Delia, I.
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
At seven oh five PM.
Thank you.
Just makes making my minutes easier. I'll create a breakout room, Bob will see a pop-up.
Okay.
Bob, we're muted, but we're back, I think. Yeah.
I made it.
So we're back. We've returned from executive session. We shared the town manager's evaluation with him. We have all signed it. He has accepted it. His overall score is he is exceeding our expectations at this point and we are, as a board, appreciative of all you do and grateful that you are here. And we are encouraging you to continue to work on a balance of work and personal life because you spent an extraordinary amount of time here and we do not want you to burn out. Does anybody have anything they want to add to that? Okay, I would like to move that we go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056D to discuss the town manager's contract.
I'll second that.
Let's call for a vote. Sarah, aye.
Bob, aye.
Neither, aye.
Sandra, aye.
Out.
Oh, sorry. Seven fifty. Seven fifty.
Breakout room two coming your way, Bob.
Okay, I'm ready.
Bob.
Made it.
Was it hard to hear me?
I can still hear you.
Are we back?
Yes.
Okay. So during executive session, we have been reviewing the town manager's contract and at this time I would like to make a motion that we accept the town manager's contract for the next two years. Um, it begins when this one ends on June thirtieth. I will second, thank you. Any discussion? Other than we're glad you're here.
I'm glad you're glad.
Billy, I.
Bob, I.
You're right.
Sandra, I. It's unanimous.
We're stuck.
We'll be chaining you to your desk for the next two years.
What else does no?
Okay, as Bob says, any other other?
Other?
Would you like to make a motion for adjournment?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
I don't like where that cursor is on the screen.
I have a feeling.
He felt the tickle.
Yeah. Bob, I.
You're right.
Sandra, I, thank you very much, everyone. You're here.
Have a good night, Bob.
Night, Bob.
I'll try, I'll try, you know. Yeah.